This election season, the Community Difference invites you to one of the most impactful nights in Frisco. Join us for a powerful evening of community dialogue as the runoff candidates for Frisco City Council places two and four share their vision, respond to real questions, and connect with the residents they hope to represent. Moderated by Brian Poduska, host of the Community Difference Collin County. This forum isn't just another Q and A. It's a chance to go deeper, to get answers that matter, to see leadership in action. Hosted live and streaming live from the beautiful Verona Villa in Frisco. This event is free and open to the public. Doors open at 6:30 PM. Event begins promptly at seven. The Community Difference, where voices go to be seen, be heard, and be remembered. Join Wednesday and let your voice be heard.
I was gonna have tighter rules when we had all the candidates originally involved. We're gonna open it up a little bit and allow for some longer answers. Louder? No sound?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll get the technical difficulties. We are a live stream, right? And we do our podcast live as well. So sometimes we have some technical hiccups, but for those of us in the audience here, at least we can all hear live. All right, so we're gonna loosen up the rules, right? We're not gonna have as strict of rules as far as the time allotted for you guys to answer. I would like to do opening statements, though. So what I'd like you guys to do is just introduce yourself, share your name, your background, and then what in the world inspired you to run for public office and particular city council? So ladies first, Tammy, go for it.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Minor Shagan. I currently serve on your Frisco City Council. I am the daughter of South Korean immigrants. I grew up in Rockford, Illinois, and it is a ninety percent Swedish town. So my childhood was very different. It was, I would say, difficult, growing up in a city where I didn't feel like I was part of the community. My parents were very involved in the community, though, very involved in the church and in the small Asian community that was there, and tried very hard to integrate us into American culture. So I brought that with me, you know, through my growing up. Went to Northwestern University, where I met my husband, who's from Richardson, Texas, and said, you know, when we were dating, "Over my dead body while I ever move to Texas." We came in 2004, raised our family here, and Frisco has been the greatest surprise. It has been such a wonderful city. I would not be the person I am today without Frisco, the welcoming spirit of our city. I could not imagine being on city council in Chicago. I think everybody ends up in jail when they're in public office over there. But in Frisco, it's, you know, your local homegrown volunteer leaders that end up being the leaders. And that's what I love about our city, is you get to know the people. And being here for twenty years, I have deep roots in our community. I've just stepped up little by little in different roles, from the Council of PTA and then to City Boards, Education Boards, and serving since 2022 now on Frisco City Council. And I have loved the job of governing as well, and I hope that I get to do it again.
Awesome. Well, we share Chicago roots.
Yes, that's right.
We talked about that in depth, I would say, on the podcast. So it's good to see that both of us ended up in Texas, even though you might have sworn it off.
I know. No, I'm glad I'm here.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Tammy. Appreciate that. Go Paul, go for it.
Perfect. So I have a little bit connection with Chicago, too. I was in Palatine for some time.
Oh, all right. I last lived in Barrington before moving.
Oh, there you go.
Right down the street.
Perfect. So we were in Palatine for some time, me and my wife, and then later on moved to California and then moved back to, moved to Frisco in the year 2021. We bought a house and then we moved into the new house in '23, and it's been a great ride. I've spent most of my adult life here in Frisco. The one that got me attracted to Frisco was the Stonebriar Mall at that time. It was brand new, and then we loved it. And when we moved to the community near Rollator and Hillcrest, the person who was selling the homes, she said that in, "Hey, this is Gunstream Elementary. Next to that is Wester and then the Centennial." So we thought, okay, this is the perfect place to move, and then we came downstairs and then signed, and then we bought the house. So that's how we got into Frisco. And I love Frisco, you know, it's everything that any family would like to raise their children, great schools. I was part of my daughter's schools, PTA, and then did a lot of volunteering work. Later on, got, became a part of the school board. I was part of programs and facilities evaluation committee and a few other things. And then I first got elected in 2019 as a school board trustee and got reelected in the year 2022. Great six-year experience. And during that time, you know, I was a great advocate for our students, teachers, and of course, the community. And while I was doing that, I also had the opportunity to be on the Frisco EDC, Economic Development Corporation, which gave me an opportunity to understand what it does in order to bring corporates to Frisco, what it does in order to bring jobs to Frisco, what it does in order to retain jobs in Frisco. During my time, about twenty-six projects were approved, and I got great experience. So with the experience of Frisco ISD in a leadership role, which brings in families to Frisco, and the leadership role in EDC, which brings in corporates to Frisco, I thought I'm perfectly poised to serve the community as a council member. So that's the reason I'm running for the city council. And my priorities are very simple. Bring in more corporates, increase the revenue sources from, apart from the homeowners, so that we'll be in a position to, you know, reduce taxes and also focus on safety and also figure out ways, innovative ways of increasing the, you know, improving the traffic situation that we already have. Because when I moved here, the population was fifty-five thousand people. Resolving a traffic issue was add more lanes. But, you know, we are about two-hundred-and-forty thousand and will cross three-hundred. So we have to be more innovative in, you know, getting to some solutions. And, I mean, you know, that's about me.
Awesome. Well, appreciate that. Thank you guys for that, those intros. As I mentioned, what I'd like to do is focus the first half of our conversation on leadership, right? So last Thursday was a Frisco Chamber of Commerce forum. They touched on a lot of the hot issues, which we'll get into in the second half, but I would like to focus on leadership, and we're gonna dive into that right now. So Frisco's been one of the fastest-growing cities and one of the most admired cities nationally over the last twenty years, and that's for many reasons. One of which is the vision, collaboration, and strong leadership of those who have been in the positions that you guys are campaigning for and then across the city as a whole, right? So the question for you guys goes to vision. So what is your vision for the city of Frisco in the next five years, ten years, and twenty years? And again, we'll go ladies first. So Tammy, what you got?
So, you know, Frisco, right now, we are on a very successful trajectory. And what we don't want is that we are a city in decline in any way. We have to be a city that stands the test of time. So how can we make sure that we do that five years, ten years, twenty years down the line? That's, those are the questions that our city council actually asks now, because that's what we're doing. We're planning for the future. And we have to make sure that if you're building a city that's sustainable for the long term, that we are safe, that we are fiscally sound, that we have something for everyone, the full lifecycle of somebody living here from growing up all the way to empty nesting and retirement, and that we are well-rounded. That's something that is very important for us. So when I think about five, ten years, I mean, we're gonna be working on the plan that we have already, but I was dreaming about, wow, twenty years from now, I'm gonna be seventy. And what is it like to live in Frisco when I'm seventy? Well, I will be able to go kayaking in the first area of Grand Park. By then, that first phase should be done, and we're already on phase two and three. But I'll be able to enjoy all those incredible water activities that are coming to Grand Park. I will probably take a micro-mobility vehicle from there and take it to the rail district, where it is so thriving because we've built that Fourth Street Plaza. And I'm gonna walk into our local bookstore, pick up a book from a local author, have an ice cream, sit down, enjoy some live music, because we are still the music-friendly community, maybe go, you know, have a beer with some friends, because we'll have multiple probably breweries at that point, and then take that micro-transit up to Universal, because I'll probably have grandkids. And so we'll enjoy a day at the Universal Park as well. And then after we're tired, because I'm old, I'll come back home and do it all over again and call my council people and say, you know, you're doing the right thing, and here's what I think. But I can see myself doing that in twenty years. I hope that that is the experience of Frisco, that all of these things that we're working towards that are generational projects, when you think about it, that they come to fruition. So that is my vision for Frisco.
I like that. I could see it. You painted a very good picture there.
In my cane.
That's right. Micro-mobility cane.
You're right, I know. You'll have to help me into the vehicle.
How about you, go Paul?
Perfect. It's very difficult to follow her, but I'll give a good try. So first of all, you know, from the land that is zoned to the homeowners, we are about eighty percent built out approximately, and for the land zone to the commercial buildings, we are about twenty to thirty percent built. So the way I would like to envision in the next five to ten to fifteen years is that more and more commercial activity happening. And my vision is that, you know, right now, we have a lot of, just she mentioned about empty nesters. A lot of kids are, you know, graduating from high school, and then they'll probably go pick up a college somewhere outside Dallas or Texas. And then after that, we would like them to come back. And then with so many corporates coming, and early a long, long time ago, it was very difficult for corporates to come and have their offices here or headquarters here in Frisco, because we used to not have enough talent. That's at the same time, you know, we now have the enough restaurants and then all the supporting infrastructure, like hospitals and all those things. So currently, it's a very appropriate time for corporates to move to Frisco. So when more and more corporates move to Frisco, EDC is doing a very good job in, you know, enticing corporates to come here. So with that, you know, I foresee the children who were born here or who grew up here, they go to college somewhere else and then come back to work here and then stay with their parents, stay in the sense, stay in the same city of their parents. So I foresee things like that to happen. And of course, you know, we have the Grand Park and then the Universal and so many other things. So from a city that has been a fast-growing suburb and city, we will be moving into a well-grown, well-established city with world-class facilities. That's how I envision Frisco to be.
Okay, I like that. Well, I've got two in college right now, so if we can accelerate that, you know, job opportunity here in Frisco, that would be great. Awesome. Well, a very simple one, and go Paul, I'll start with you on this one. What type of leader are you?
Well, you know, various people give their own definitions of me, but from my standpoint, I'm both a good listener and a good action taker, you know, I've taken action or just listened. And at the same time, I am a person who unites communities and then who gives opportunities to people. Quick example is that, you know, I have my own nonprofit that was started in 2018. It's relatively easy to motivate key members if they are paid in a corporate setting. But if you're in a nonprofit setting, then, you know, you need to motivate them based on the vision and then based on what you plan to do. So I think I was decently successful in that. We have given more than fifty thousand dollars worth of scholarships to Frisco ISD students, gave more than fifty thousand dollars to a cancer clinic in Richardson, which provides free treatment for people with no insurance or underinsured. Led our school board for the last six years as a school board trustee. I'm a trusted aide or a trusted person, a go-to person for the community members when they see an issue that they need some resolution for. So I'm somebody who is more accessible, who listens and takes an action.
Excellent. Tammy, same question for you.
Yes, and I know this chair is mysteriously moving me. So sorry if it looks like I'm moving. I'll sit a little bit like this. So I think my leadership style is definitely listening, learning, and also multiplying leaders. So listening is really key. That is the most important thing you can do as a city council member, is care and listen and be accessible. That is the work of being on council. You are representing people. And I remember being that citizen that would write to my council member and totally get ignored, and I'd get pretty mad. Now I know we have like hundreds of emails, so it's difficult. But, but you wanna have access to your representative, so I've been doing my best to be available and listen and help solve problems, whether it's, you know, businesses having an issue, a small business owner or a resident, whatever it is that we can do to help, that is my leadership style. I wanna do that. And then learning, you know, I obviously have my passions of where I thrive, and those are my strengths, but I also am a student, just a lifelong student. I love learning. I love finding out how things actually work, and that has been very interesting in the city of Frisco. There's so much to learn in this job of governing our city, the operations, and the incredible people, the staff that work for us. I followed the trash, like, I mean, it sounds crazy, but I wanted to know, what happens to your trash? You know, it gets picked up, and then where does it go? So I went and, you know, followed the routes, obviously had the city manager with me, so I would be okay, but I wanted to see the process. I also went to see the process of the water filtration and went to Wiley to see how it actually is done and the different way that Frisco does it than some of the other cities. So we've never had like a boil water emergency type of thing. We have very high standards for the city of Frisco. So even, you know, down to the minuscule, I've ridden along with the police, ridden along with the fire to learn how do they do what they do, keeping us safe every single day. So part of leadership, I think, is you're always learning. You don't always have the answers, and it's important that we're learning from the people around us. And then lastly is multiplying the leaders. You know, as a leader, I'm always looking for who are the people behind me and who are the ones that I can help elevate? Because it's not just about me being in a position, it's about me opening doors for everybody to get involved. And, you know, I heard my opponent say during one of the forums that the greatest opportunity in Frisco is himself and his campaign, and I thought that is a complete opposite answer of what a real leader is. A leader is someone who's looking at, out for everybody else and trying to uplift them and bring them to their highest potential. So that is the kind of leader that I strive to be, and hopefully I am gonna be able to continue to try to be as your council leader.
Awesome. Thank you. So those are my high-level questions. Now, we're gonna get a little, little deeper here, because we talk about this on the podcast all the time, so we like to dive a little bit deeper. And I know I'm getting some smiles out there for those of you who've been on the podcast. So first question, one of the traits of a good leader is the ability to navigate complicated issues and projects to produce a positive result. Please provide a concrete example of how you've provided leadership to bring multiple opposing views together to create a solution that worked for the betterment of the whole. Tammy?
So we've had a lot of complicated projects in the city of Frisco over the last three years. I would say one of the toughest ones that required listening to multiple different opinions and thoughts and stakeholders was Universal. And that was one of the projects where we also got a lot of community feedback, I'm sure, that you saw, and many of you were part of that process. We, as a council, didn't even really get behind this project at first when it was presented to us. They sought us out. We didn't go knocking on Universal's door and asking them to come. They said, hey, we've got an idea that we want to implement for an innovative community, and it's something that we've seen as a problem in our Orlando parks. We wanna have a product that will work for ages three to eleven, because they're the ones that don't like our parks. They need to have a innovative, a smaller footprint, and the rides are too high, so we've gotta make them a little lower and make it a little friendlier. So they were looking for a community that could do this with them and partner, and they chose Frisco. There's also, obviously, the neighborhood that they came right behind, and so this neighborhood had a lot of thoughts about this particular project. And as soon as it came out in the news that we're gonna bring Universal to Frisco, I started reaching out to this neighborhood and the leadership to figure out, okay, what are your concerns? How can we do this? And there were multiple ways that our staff did that as well, town halls and meetings, but also creating some concessions. I mean, we had to work with and act as the go-between from the Universal folks and the neighborhood. And we ended up giving about half, you know, five-hundred-thousand dollars in concessions to help build some infrastructure for them that would make them feel comfortable for this moving forward. And I would say one of the neighbors in there, Lance Taylor, he has told me, you know, I came into council meetings angry at city council, angry at all of you, and, you know, you really helped to change my understanding of what our leaders are trying to do. And I actually began to support the project, and I support our city leadership as well. So that was a really good outcome of a very difficult project. And when you look at the future of this project and why we said yes, it's for the future. This, the sales tax revenue generated from Universal is projected to have three million annually into our general fund. That is huge. That means it offsets the cost to our taxpayer. That will pay for more police and fire without you having to pay for it. So in the long term, it's a great investment. We only put twelve million into it. We're getting this amazing ROI, and I think that the neighborhood has, is excited about it now as well.
Great example. Go Paul, same.
All right. So of course, in a school board, there are a lot of, you know, situations where you have to, you know, figure out what the solution is and then work on, figure out what the problem is and then figure out ways of resolving it. I have a couple of examples. Especially during the COVID time, we had a section of, especially the mask, no mask situation. So we had a section of community members who did not want masks, and then another section of community members who wanted masks. But the overarching thing is that, you know, we have to follow what the state law says. So within that, you know, there were some requirements as to how we handle that particular situation. So I was one of those trustees who has visited both the groups, the pro-mask and then anti-mask community groups. I met them in Starbucks and then, you know, understood what they wanted to share with me, and at the same time also informed them that, you know, we will only be following the state laws. So then we had to make certain changes because, you know, we wanted some of the people who wanted to have pro-masks and then have us have some sort of a labeling or stickers kept at each door saying that, you know, we recommend masks, even though it was not mandatory. So we had to make some adjustments, but at the same time, it was a difficult time to navigate, and then the school district is for everyone. So I have listened to both the parties, and then, you know, we figured out a solution and then, you know, we moved forward with that. So that's how we were able to make that. And then the other one that's always contentious is the rezoning. Because of the way the population moves and then the population is increasing in certain areas, sometimes the number of students in a particular school, depending upon the builder or the subdivision that's coming up closer to that, then we'll have to move certain students from nearby subdivisions to various other schools. So there was a situation where some of these students, you know, didn't want to move from, say, Reedy High School to Frisco High School, and then from Wakeland to Lone Star, you know, when we were doing some changes. And I took that opportunity and then met community members at various subdivisions, whether it was in Phillips Creek Ranch or Stonewater Crossing, collected all the information, various issues that they had, and then sat with the administration and then figured out what is the best solution that we can do. Probably, you know, moving the students from Stonewater Crossing to Lone Star could have been a tough thing with the four-twenty-three in the middle. So we worked on having them stay back in Wakeland. So some of the solutions we were able to find out. So I was in the middle of such contentious issues, and then I never shied away, and then I sat with the people, the teams, both ends, and then figured out solutions and then worked on them.
Love it. Collaboration, compromise, right? Couple of C-words there? Love it. Okay, another specific example here. So serving in public leadership often involves making difficult decisions and sometimes mistakes. So we have the concept of fail forward. We talk about that quite a bit on the podcast. Question to you guys, can you share a specific decision or action from your professional or public service past that in hindsight you would have handled differently? What did you learn from that experience and how has it changed the way you approach leadership and decision-making? Tammy, we'll start with you on this one.
You know, I mean, I think everyone is aware of, you know, a recent public mistake, and one of the things that, when you're in public office, is everything is public. Your accomplishments and your wins and also your losses and your failures. And for me, it was really trusting someone too much in a private home and thinking it was a safe space, and then also for me saying too much. But from then, it's really, what am I gonna do about it? And will I choose to kind of, you know, give up or shy away from what happened, or do I have the hard conversations and try to rebuild with the community and those that I have heard? So um, that is the approach that I've taken. Um, I grew up in a family of faith where it was, you know, we're gonna make mistakes and that's normal and it's human, but you've got to um, do the work to make it better. And um, to me, that's, that's what you have to do even as a public official because all, all of that work is also public. Um, and, and to me, having those private conversations to start um, is what really has been healing. I, I've had a lot of wonderful conversations and the interesting thing too is, you know, out of the beauty, out of the ashes can come beauty. And there have been some new relationships that have um, started from this uh, whole incident that I would never have expected. Um, very open conversations about our city and the experiences of living in our city uh, that I also never expected. And I would say learning the communication gap that we have as well. So that's caused me to think, you know what, I need to put more information um, out there to our citizens about all different topics in Frisco. Because they're saying, we don't know a lot of the things that you're um, that, that the city council has been trying to tell us. Um, so now I'm trying to do that in my own way through my own um, social media and everything. So it's, it's, you know, turning something that could have been just um, the end into really a beginning. And um, that's really the lesson that I've learned through this.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. So for me, one of the important things uh, before I ran for the office in twenty nineteen was to enhance the entrepreneurial programs, whether it was incubator, EDU or YEA or ISM. And I always wanted to spend more time with the students, you know, being part of those programs. However, the, the role of a school board trustee was, I mean, you know, before I ran versus when I was there, it's much different and then it's more challenging and then more time-consuming. While uh, you might be seeing on the social media, uh, especially these days, um, uh, you know, I'm being called as absentee Gopal. So the reason that was said was that, you know, I was, I had to go to India for taking care of my mom and then she passed away and then later on for my, my sister passed away. So during those difficult times, I had to go and then out of all the sixty-six school board meetings, I missed about four of them in total in the last six years. However, when they say that, you know, I was absent, uh, absentee Gopal, I was really absent for my senior daughter's, daughter, when she was about, in her senior year, to be with her to figure out, you know, how, figure out what college she needs to go to. When they say it's an absentee Gopal, I was absent for my wife and my family to have dinner with them because I was focusing on what I need to do so that our kids will have dinner on them, on their homes. Because through the nonprofit, I was working for those. When they say that, you know, it was absentee Gopal, I was not available for the family to take care of, to be, to go for a park or to be, go for a movie because I want the students to have a good quality of life. So these are some of the things. However, you know, coming back to your question from the incubator, EDU and other program standpoint, I was unable to spend as much time, I would like to, with those programs because the time and attention that was needed for other areas as a school board trustee was much more needed and uh, and depend, I mean, and I had to focus more on those things. So that's what I was unable to do as a trustee.
Gotcha, well, thank you. All right, final question on leadership, uh, you know, accountability is one of those key things of being a leader. Um, with accountability comes sleepless nights sometimes. So the question to you guys, what keeps you up at night? And Tammy, we'll start with you.
So I do think about Frisco a lot. I think about our future here. Um, and I, I want to see the things that we're working on come to fruition. So I think about that, that keeps me up. Um, but I would also say that the tone and the tenor of this election has kept me up too. Because it is not our Frisco. I do feel like there is a lot of um, additional pressure and um, negativity that has taken over that does not feel right. Um, and that, you know, I, I want to preserve the spirit of Frisco. The, the spirit of Frisco is so good, it is so positive, it is so giving. The community loves each other, we really do. Everybody in this room, you know and love each other and you would do anything for each other. That is our city. Uh, and, and what we have is, you know, at least for my, my opponent, I feel we have a force that is outside of the city trying to change that. And I don't wanna see that happen, I worry about the future of our city and the leadership. I would love to see people that can still preserve that beautiful spirit of Frisco that um, we have all come to know and love and that that can continue on for that twenty years when I'm seventy. I would love to see that as our future leadership in our city.
Okay, love it.
So for me, there are several things. First and foremost, you know, the city that I moved to Frisco in the, actually two thousand and three, you know, I just stand corrected, in two thousand, I moved to Plano and then two thousand and three is when I went, moved to Frisco. So Frisco was a bright and shining object at that time. And I want to do everything in my capacity to ensure that, you know, that will be the same thing for people who are coming now to Frisco. The reason I'm bringing that up is, you know, when I moved, there were certain other cities, also there were, you know, bright and shining objects, but you know, over a period of time, they've declined. And then I do not want that to happen. So that what, that's what keeps me awake in the night, you know. What can we do innovatively, what can we do differently to s- ensure that, you know, the same passion is there? Where the same um, facilities are there, you know, the same enthusiasm is there in the community to consider to move to Frisco or to come, consider to be part of the Frisco. If there is a businessman, then, you know, they should consider to start their corporate office or, you know, if there's a franchisee, they should think that, hey, you know, I should have this in Frisco. So what do I need to do to ensure that, you know, these are the things that'll come to fruition? So that'll be the focus, um, and those are the things that'll keep me awake.
Okay. Well, I hope you guys are able to sleep, but um, you know.
I'll sleep better on June seventh.
I believe that. All right, so we've been focusing on leadership up until now, right? And I mentioned the, the Frisco Chamber of Commerce forum that happened last week and they touched on quite a few of the hot topics that are going on currently in Frisco. So what I'd like to do, and I know, Gopal, you've got some other en- engagements this evening, I'm sure you do as well, Tammy, so we're gonna try to make this as rapid-fire as possible. I don't have an official timer, but um, if I need to, I'll throw one of our challenge flags that we ended up not needing for tonight, but um, I was looking forward to some flying beanbags here. Um, but, so focusing on some of the issues here in Frisco. Um, one that's near and dear to my heart, uh, just because I work with a lot of the businesses downtown, so downtown Frisco, the rail district, right? Um, obviously a ton of construction going on down there. Because of that and several other factors, businesses are struggling. So question for you guys, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this more tactically, right? What solutions can the city of Frisco, the EDC, whatever, whatever arm of government, city government that we can, um, you know, collaborate with, what specific tactics can be done in the short term? Because we've got another year plus of the construction, what can be done to help these downtown businesses?
There's a lot that's been done and we're gonna continue to do it. Um, the first thing would be the connection between the Economic Development Corporation and the downtown. Because connecting that corporate incentive bucket to the local businesses did not exist until this um, last couple of years. So creating that bridge has been so important to help some potential grants, which now are gonna be expanded to Community Development Corporation grants. Even that, though, is not doing enough, so we've decided we've gotta expand the scope i- in the short term to um, insert more assistance into downtown. But the goal is to have increased marketing, um, to help the infrastructure, the facades look um, like they all match each other. And then we have hired a downtown liaison so that we have more communication with their downtown merchants. Um, but there's so many different ways even that the chamber is now getting involved as well and the, the community is getting involved. I'm hearing so many exciting ideas of how we're gonna help, you know, essentially support all of these businesses for the next couple of years as um, they have to get through this transformation. Because once we're on the other side of it, these businesses are gonna be thriving because of all the walkability, the destination we've created. But we do have to help them get through this transition. Um, and we're implementing all of those ways too. But if you have other ideas, you can bring them to city council, you can bring them to the chamber, we are open for business for all of those.
Gopal?
Yeah, so, you know, I was in the EDC when the downtown liaison uh, role was created and then I think it's, it's very important and then I think they are doing an awesome job. Frisco Chamber has done the receipt, race to receipts.
Yep.
And uh, they have started it again. So and then the beneficiaries are the PTAs. Uh, these are good. And some of the uh, ideas that I have is that, you know, uh, to have more and more nonprofits have their spirit evenings, spirit nights planned around certain businesses so that, you know, there are more nonprofits are, you know, pushing their uh, you know, the communities towards the downtown and then depending upon the type of the business, then, you know, there can be some sort of incentive planned around them. So I would like nonprofits to come there and then do more and more. I have my office in the downtown too, so, you know, I understand what we are all going through and then, you know, uh, I would like more and more activity happen through, with the help of nonprofits and other corporates.
I like it. We uh, we had a Chamber of Commerce meeting earlier today, uh, at the NAC Theater in downtown Frisco. So we had several of the area chamber leaders visit and uh, they got to experience firsthand what you, you're mentioning, your office is right there. So, awesome, well, thank you for that. Um, okay, traffic, right? You mentioned it earlier, Gopal. Um, and I, I got to see some of the behind-the-scenes uh, traffic monitoring, traffic strategy that the city is employing currently. So the, the myth out there, yes, traffic is, in congestion is bad, right? It, it, it comes with the city of growth. Um, but there are current things that are in place that are trying to improve that and managing it. What specifically can be done better in your opinion uh, to, to alleviate as we continue to grow, right? Because we're at, what, two hundred and thirty-six thousand people currently? Um, in the next five years, wha- what can be done better, what new techniques can be adopted?
I mean, they have to be data-driven solutions and that's what our department is best at, is capturing the data, um, putting in the innovative technology. Uh, Brian Mowen in this, in the group, in, on our staff is absolutely a genius, I think, at implementing the newest and greatest for our people to be able to move around faster and better. Um, and also being part of the regional solutions that are required for getting people moving around. Uh, I, I think it'll be really interesting to see how the micro-mobility goes in Arlington because as, you know, uh, we try solutions like that in Frisco, we're gonna need to have people buy in and try it um, with us. It was something that the AI vehicles were um, initially adopted in about twenty sixteen, just a trial. And people were afraid at that time to get in the car for a self-driving vehicle. I think now that everybody's driving a Tesla, it should be okay. Um, and we need people to try uh, these new options that we're gonna be looking at as we um, explore how to move people around faster and better. But we are part of a larger group called the Regional Transportation Council, which I represent on right now. And that has a greater transit two-point-oh fifty-year plan that Frisco can also be part of. So it's not something that we have to figure out on our own because traffic is a regional problem. So it will have to have a regional solution.
Awesome, thank you. Gopal, any, any new ideas?
Yeah, definitely, you know, the uh, transit-related thing, especially the micro-transit uh, you know, can be leveraged in places like downtown. Probably like, you know, with the Toyota Stadium reinvestment happening with more uh, construction, office buildings coming up, then, you know, if there is some sort of a transportation where they park at one place and then yet they use a local transport, uh, the vehicle to move to the east of uh, Main Street so that, you know, they don't have to use the cars and then alleviating some of the traffic s- uh, situations there. And probably other ones is, you know, uh, in the east, uh, where there's Hanuman Temple and other things out there. Maybe there can be some spots where, you know, there, there's a vehicle going into a community called Rich Worth, it picks up all the people who are going to that place instead of, you know, having everybody park in the Hanuman Temple. You know, I'm just e- explaining a couple of use cases. But overall, uh, use of smart technology is very, very essential. Um, I already met with the traffic department, they are doing a proof-of-concept for uh, certain solutions. Uh, use a, usage of the smart signals depending upon their new cameras, you know, not necessarily to track for traffic violations, but more to understand the traffic flow and then, you know, provide some real-time solutions. So we will need more and more of that because it's not just the people, uh, two hundred and forty thousand people that are in Frisco, but as uh, the cities in the north like Salina and Pilot Point, they are developing, they will be, uh, coming to Frisco or passing through Frisco, same from east to west or west to east. So it is um, high time that we are considering other solutions and I'm glad that we are in a good trajectory on that.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, uh, economic development, so, Gopal, you were on the EDC uh, board for some time. Uh, you mentioned it earlier, the, what keeps you up at night is, you know, an, an aging city, right? Um, but we're still a growing city. So we're, one of the challenges is to keep it growing and how do we deal with the aging infrastructure? So I'd love your perspective on how do we balance that of the, the aspect of a growing city yet having some aging infrastructure?
Yeah, so I was part of, as a school board trustee, I was part of uh, programs, actually before I was school board trustee, I was part of Programs and Facilities Evaluation Committee wherein we figured out what are the schools that needs to have a refresh, whether it's a carpet or, you know, the IT piece of it or, you know, to redo the furniture and then things like that. So similar study, you know, we already have a comprehensive uh, uh, plan team. However, you know, similar to uh, Programs and Facilities Evaluation Committees, you know, we have to engage our community to figure out, you know, which are the, which parts of the infrastructure needs a refresh and then, you know, how are we going to fund them and then in what priorities? So those uh, types of activities will be needed so that, you know, we will be working on understanding the needs of the infrastructure and then how to resolve them in a timely manner.
Okay. Tammy?
Um, you know, we do have aging infrastructure, but Frisco plans way in advance. So what you're seeing now, um, with, you know, all of the, there's, there's super lines and water lines and that kind of thing is already being worked on, on the east side where we're doing some replacements. Um, and these, you may not, you might not see them because they're not developments that are coming out of the ground, but we are working on them to make sure that um, everything is working in Frisco. Because we do not want the headline, um, that, you know, that there's a huge water problem or something like that in Frisco. Uh, so we're proactive always about the aging infrastructure. And um, part of what can help fund that so that it's not on the taxpayer is having additional outside money come in, the sales tax revenue. And that's how it works. I mean, when someone spends a dollar in Frisco, you have basically two percent of that can come and stay in our city. Six point two-five percent of that sales tax revenue goes back to the state, two percent stays in Frisco. So the more that people are spending in Frisco, the more that it helps Frisco and it helps offset what you have to pay for. Because one percent goes into our general fund, paying for police and fire and our basic city services. The other one percent gets broken up into two um, banks. It goes into economic development for corporate incentives and then also community development for community development projects. And the economic development bucket, you know, the last three years, we had seventy headquarter relocations. Uh, six hundred tech startups are in, in the city of Frisco, which is amazing. Fifty of the seventy headquarter relocations did not need economic incentives. They just wanted to come to Frisco. And that's huge, that means people are now choosing to come to Frisco. They don't want, they don't even need to be paid to come. Um, Toyota Financial Services, for instance, coming to Southstone Yards. I mean, that was something they just wanted to do, they were excited about that building and being in that location right across from Toyota in Plano. Um, and that's a, a great example of building a city that people wanna be in. The Frisco FOMO is real. And uh, we're creating a city that does not even need that bucket as much for those Economic Development Corporation dollars. Um, and so we have some other options as our city grows. Um, and, you know, that's how we can actually fund our city in ways that do not tax the taxpayer, our residents. Uh, that is the best way to ensure that our city is sustainable for the long term. Because otherwise, you're gonna be just continuing to pay for it the entire time.
Very good. Okay, so I'm gonna do a quick time check. I know, Gopal, and we'll let you guys out of here soon enough. I also wanna do a quick check- I also wanna do a quick check. Do we have any, uh, audience questions coming in from outside? Okay. So if you're watching on the live stream, feel free to send some questions. Uh, you can type in the, in the chat box there. Any questions that you have for the candidates here. Also, we're gonna open it up to the audience, uh, for a few minutes as well. So not gonna do that just yet, cause I do have one more question and then we'll do audience engagement and then we'll let you guys go.
Okay.
All right? So, well, topic is gonna be community engagement and inclusion. You guys both touched on, you know, we, we have a fractured community. What specifically can you guys do, if elected, to bring the community together and foster that cohesiveness that's, you know, there's always been some sort of fracturing in a community this, our size, but we've moved forward, um, historically. So how do we keep that momentum going in today's environment? Tammy, I'll start with you.
I would push back. I don't think there's actually fracturing. Um, I think we have different ideas and opinions in our city, but, um, I still don't believe that it's actually fractured, but I do think that we need some.
Sprained?
Sprained. Maybe, uh, yeah, sprained, I guess. Um, but I think what, what you have to do when something's, you know, feeling tense is you gotta open up some communication avenues. And more community conversations would, would be really helpful. We have so many different communities within our community. I mean, now we are fifty-one percent majority-minority. And what I have seen is that they are more siloing, I guess, you know, so we're not seeing as much integration. And when I, when I go to a festival in a, a certain part of our city, I'm thinking, gosh, it would be so great for people all over Frisco to experience this. And, um, and vice versa. So people coming to a football game that they may never have come to, you know, that, those are the kinds of things that I wanna see. It's just more integration within our city and more communication within the different groups. We are currently doing that with our multicultural advisory committee and we wanna lean into them to give us some ideas. Um, this is the first multicultural advisor committee we've ever had in the city of Frisco, where we have different cultures that are represented so we can do the championing and advocating for our, um, very diverse communities in Frisco. And then the international fest that we were able to implement, the first citywide international celebration of our music, dance, um, foods, all of the cultures and experience of Frisco. Uh, that I think can also be expanded. We expanded it from one day to three days and I think it's probably even gonna be bigger next time and potentially throughout the year to do even more. I've also noticed that, um, our, our library has been doing a lot more cultural programming. And I think that's where we're gonna be able to utilize, um, bringing our community together for these conversations.
Very good.
So, the Frisco city to which I moved, uh, twenty-one years ago, it's not the same now. And especially from the campaign standpoint, you know, I was, uh, you know, slightly more involved from the year twenty-sixteen onwards. So the campaign style and the way the city elections are happening between twenty-sixteen and then now, it's gone, um, you know, very bad. I would say that, you know, there's less civility and I think, uh, we need to get out of this such situations in future. So I would like, I mean, you know, some sort of a conversations, maybe, you know, some sort of a healing, some sort of community coming together. Maybe, you know, leveraging the, uh, the subcommittee that you have just mentioned, Tammy. And also leveraging maybe a global village, sort of a, an event where everybody is coming together and then where everyone will have an opportunity to share. Because we cannot continue to be a community, a city, where elections are won based on lies. And then elections are won based on deceit. These are elections where, you know, people love the community, they wanted to give back to the community. And when people wanted to give back to the community, the community needs to come together and then figure out who is the best person and then take it forward. Rather than focusing on negativity and all the lies that are happening. So that should not have happened. There is a reason these elections are happening in May and they're not in November. So I think, you know, there's some sort of a community coming together needs to happen, leveraging some of the festivals and subcommittees that we already have. So that, you know, we'll have a, we'll ha- we'll have the community where, why we have moved in the first place. You know, it has to be in the way, where, why we have moved. We have all moved to Frisco. Most of them have moved to Frisco from outside cities to have a very good life, very good quality of life, to bring their families together, to grow together. So we need to focus on that and then ensure that that will happen, the promise for what Frisco initially has for everybody.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any, uh, anything online? No? Okay. All right, with that, uh, I will open it up for a couple of minutes to, for some audience engagement. Does anybody have a question that they would like to ask our candidates? Who's bold enough to ask the first question? Nobody from the podcast even? So que- question for, for those watching, which of the sports teams in Frisco is your favorite? Does that, uh, represent that well?
I mean, uh, the Cowboys would be considered a Frisco sports team?
Yeah, they're headquartered here.
I would, I would say Cowboys. Yeah, they're in Frisco.
We'll call them, yeah, the Frisco Cowboys.
Okay, so Cowboys?
Cowboys.
Cowboys?
Yeah, I tell you, babe.
All right, we're done.
Like the Bears still?
Of course.
Oh, sorry. I gave them the long time ago.
It's painful, but it's no more painful than being a Cowboys fan.
Okay.
All right, all right. We're veering down a path here.
I know.
Mayor Cheney has a question.
Oh, Mayor Cheney, yes, please.
Yes, last year we had a highly contested election regarding civil service, um, and collective bargaining. And that's kind of reared its head again in this election. The two candidates that are not here, uh, essentially say that they're in favor of those positions, despite the public projecting them overwhelmingly last year. So I'd love to hear the candidates' positions and if they're possible, say, if you can.
Yeah, so the question, uh, summary question is, uh, would like to, the, thank you, Mayor Cheney, for that. Uh, question is, s- s- public safety, your viewpoint on the public safety, uh, aspects. And that was actually one of my hot button topics, so I'm glad you pointed that out. So, um, I'll let you guys answer.
So again, so last year, we had, um, an election on whether or not we allow civil. All of the departments and hires, all of the people then underneath. And so every ha- everything has a way, a system of reporting up. And that is good governance. To take one department, just one, and set it aside and say, we'll have you governed separately and we'll bring in an, an additional mediator, where potentially you'll have to do everything that this mediator says, could bankrupt our city. I mean, it has actually bankrupted, um, multiple cities across the US, because the city council no longer has the authority as your representative to say, no, we can't do that. We actually can't afford it. Now we have to raise your taxes in order to afford all of the things that this one subset is asking for by a national and an international union. So, um, I am not for that. I believe that good governance means overall consistent governance over the city of Frisco and that is actually protecting the taxpayer to make sure that we have governance over your budget. If we don't have control over your budget, then we really have given up control to an outside agenda. And, um, I absolutely don't support that, but I will always support our public safety. I will always support our police and fire. They do a phenomenal job. Um, I, and, and that's what we're gonna continue to do in our city, is put them first with fifty percent of our budget. Whenever you have something in your personal budget that is fifty percent, that's a big deal. That is a top priority for you. And that is a top priority for our city council. So every year, we talk to our chiefs, both, um, fire and police, and ask them, what do you need? What can we do to help? And they'll tell us what they need and they go first. But we also care about roads. We care about our library. We care about parks. We care about public works, IT. All of it is important. All eighteen-hundred employees of the city of Frisco are important. So we wanna make sure we take care of everyone. Um, but to, for, definitely, I am a no on collective bargaining and civil service for any of our departments. Doesn't have to be fire or police, it could be any of them.
Yeah, and that's a very, that's a very important distinction of, just because you're against collective bargaining doesn't mean you're against the police or fire or whatever.
Well, and I should clarify too, that I'm not saying forever I would be against all unions. I think unions did have a place and time. I mean, I'm, we're from Chicago.
Chicago, that's right.
You know, when you have low wages and you have bad working conditions, that's when a union can come in and help. And in Frisco, that is not the case. We do not have low wages. Um, we have eighty-five thousand dollars a year for our, um, fire and police. Um, and the working conditions, we have great working conditions for our fire and police and excellent equipment training. We're doing everything we can and whenever they need, we do try to fill. So, um, I don't believe that there is room in Frisco. It is not the time and place for a union.
Thank you. Go Paul.
Perfect. So there is a reason, um, we are adopting a city manager and then the council relationship, the ways of governance here. What it means is that, you know, the city manager will be a paid employee and then, you know, he will have various, he or she will have various departments. And then, you know, the needs of the departments are addressed by the leaders within the city managers' group. So it has been set up like that. And then all of a sudden, if we have a small sliver of people, uh, uh, employees or teams, whether it's fire or, uh, or police, if they have their own group of people, uh, which are again influenced by the people outside of Frisco and then, you know, they have wanted different ways of governance. And then all of a sudden, then Development Department or Library and then, you know, everybody would like to have their own ways of collective bargaining and then we'll be in a big mess because there will not be a focus on how we need to govern the city in a, in a larger way. So I am okay to have the, uh, associations because, you know, each association, uh, may cater to the need of, like, you know, maybe some, something happens to an officer, then, you know, all the association will come together and then figure out what can they do to take care of the child or what can they do, the meal train for that particular officer's family, things like that. I'm okay for things like that, but not disturbing the current way we are taking care of the administration. So I do not want to have a silo, uh, way of, siloed way of, uh, handling each department.
Got it. Thank you. You got one, one online?
Yeah. Uh, they're curious where the other two candidates are that are contesting those, uh, these two positions.
That's a good question. So, uh, we, we invited all four, uh, and this was about a week and a half ago, something like that. And, um, these two accepted that offer very quickly. Um, Bert Thacker also did as well. Jared Alad, uh, he said he was unavailable for this evening and he was clear about that. So we sent out the promotion. Uh, Bert Thacker was in, in that promotion because he had accepted to be here this evening. And I was informed today that he was unable to make it. So he was double-booked and that's, that's where they are. All right, one, one more question from the audience and then we'll let you guys do your, uh, do your final wrap and then let you off the hook. Any other questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
What are you going to do after the election?
Well, literally the next day, I'm leaving town. On vacation. Um, but no matter what happens, uh, after the election, I mean, I live in Frisco, this is my home. Been here twenty years. We've created a life here. So I will always be serving. I'm gonna be involved in the community. I will continue to look for ways to fill in the gap and help. Um, so that's gonna be whether I'm on council or not.
Almost similar, but I'm not traveling immediately after the election. I'll be here and, um, you know, I will, uh, I'm hopeful that community will elect me. And I will, you know, pla- I've already, uh, you know, made some plans, but, you know, more on a personal basis. But in general, uh, figure out, you know, how I can be a value to the community, how I can be a contributor and then not a consumer. I would like to do that.
All right. Well, that brings us to the end. I'm gonna allow you guys to, uh, just give some closing statements. What final message would you like voters to remember as they head to the polls today through next Tuesday and early voting? And then next, the following Saturday for the actual election. So Tammy, go ahead.
So this election is definitely consequential. Uh, in the last forum that we had, my opponent was talking about eligibility for council and how that is the reason why we should vote for him. But I would, um, assert that it's not about whether you're eligible to run for council, it's whether you're qualified. My three daughters are eligible to run for council. And if they were to ask me, should I run for council, mom? Um, I'd say, well, you probably need to get involved with your community first. Maybe serve on a board somewhere, um, make an impact. Learn how the city works. Learn what the strategies are on the EDC and the CDC and how Visit Frisco helps with the whole economic development and tourism. Read the master plans for all of the different master plans that we have, downtown, parks, cultural affairs. Understand the twenty-fourty comp plan and maybe have met with a lot of those leaders. Learn what our city is all about. Get involved, show some actions and then potentially you are qualified to lead our city. And so that's what I've done. I've put in the work for this seat. I have been involved with our city for many years before, but during the time that I've been on council, I have been available. I have been attending. I have been in the details. I've, uh, learned so much, but I've also grown as well. And I feel that I have governed our city well. I've been able to help us get projects moving forward that were stuck. Things like the mix, having a development there now, no longer a hole in the toll where it's just empty. Um, the Grand Park vision, actually getting to a point where we have a vision that we've agreed to, we are starting, we have the first trail. Now phase one is under design. That's such a big thing because it's been sitting there again for over ten years, really more like twenty. Downtown, working on downtown and having a vision for that, that we agreed to as a council. And now we are working with seventy million dollars investment, um, and a parking garage to create a transformational destination in downtown. So many things that we've been able to do, um, in the last three years that take time for a leader, you have to show up and do the work. Uh, and that's what I have done. I believe I have earned my seat back and I hope that our voters will, um, vote me back into office. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Go Paul, your stage.
Perfect. So as I've said earlier, I've been a board of trustee, uh, for the last six years. I have, uh, been here for the last twenty-one years. And I've spent most of my adult life here. I have a nonprofit that has been giving back to the community. And more importantly, I've been part of the EDC where, you know, I had an opportunity to watch closely twenty-six projects and then approve them. One example, the, one of my favorite examples, uh, being the Toyota Stadium reinvestment. That not only adds more value to, uh, Toyota Stadium in terms of adding more seats, having more shade so that we can start games earlier during the day. Apart from that, you know, there's a lot of commercial activity that'll be coming around it, plus the TERS that will also help the school district apart from the city extension of the TERS. So all these experiences are very, very essential for somebody who plans to lead our city as a council member. This is not an on-the-job training. My opponent has not done anything, has got zero experience in anything that I have said. He has not been part of any boards and commissions. He was not part of anything like, you know, being elected earlier and then serving the community. From a fast-moving suburban city, we are now a full-grown city with established world-class facilities. At this stage, we cannot have somebody trying to figure out how to learn, you know, how a fire department works or a traffic department works and, and this is not a on-the-job training. Plus, one cannot run just because, you know, their spouse, his spouse is.